Sorry, it's too easy, it's too easy. It happens so fast, so fast, I don't even know what's happening.
Okay, okay, I didn't know, I didn't tell them.
Yeah.
But yeah, it was gone, but then I see it back again. No, no, I didn't think so, I noticed something was being done that I didn't know. They were allowed to bring it back because it's been gone for a few days and they're back.
Good evening, as I walked up, I said good morning. Been a long day, I was very excited, this is a special meeting and so we'd like to welcome you to the City of Lemon Grove's regular city council meeting. Please put your cell phones on silent and city clerk please, please call the roll.
Councilmember Faiai, here. Councilmember Heredia?
Here.
Mayor Porten Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Snow?
Here.
Mayor Snow, we have a quorum of the city council.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Heredia, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have no changes to tonight's agenda. Just really quickly, item number four on tonight's agenda, attachment A has been received and all copies have been distributed to all members seated at the dais. In addition, copies of attachment A can be found at the public review table.
Thank you, Mr. Pablo. Next, we have a very exciting moment today, we are going to do the administration of oath of office. We will now have the swearing and ceremony for our newly appointed councilmember Yadira Altimorano. And at this time, I would like to invite Danny Altimorano.
Can we call him Danny?
Oh.
Johnny, come on up.
Johnny, who's Danny? Nice to meet you. Alright, so we'll have Johnny, is your last name, Altimorano? Johnny Altimorano administered the oath of office to our new councilmember and following the swearing and ceremony, our councilmember Altimorano will also share her remarks.
I state your name, you solemnly swear.
I, Yadira Altimorano, solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend, oops, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
And now we'll turn the time over to you to go ahead and share some remarks with us, thank you.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank each of you guys up here, the community, for this opportunity. And I'm a licensed individual, I am appointed and I'm looking forward to serving all of you guys and to represent you guys to the best of my abilities. Thank you, I'm truly honored.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, I have flowers for you and then if you want your family to come up and join you, we'll get some pictures and then we'll come up as well and we'll join you.
Thank you.
Alright, so does the family want to come up and take some pictures?
Thank you, and then if I could get one with my mom and my other family.
You guys take your. Want to take pictures with the father?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your kids all. Thank you guys.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, thank you, everyone, this is a really exciting time and it's nice to see a full complement up here. So we will go ahead and do a new roll call and so, Mr. Clerk, can you do a new roll call for us?
Councilmember Heredia?
Here.
Councilmember Faiai, here. Councilmember Altimorano?
Here.
Mayor Porten Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Snow?
Here.
Mayor Snow, we have a quorum of the city council.
Alright, fantastic, let's do a more round of applause. Okay, the next item on the agenda is we have a presentation from the Lemon Grove Fire Department. They're giving us their annual update and we are going to have Fire Chief Ben Coe present the Lemon Grove Fire Department Annual Update. Good to see you.
Good evening, great to see you. Congratulations on having me. My name is Ben Coe, I'm the Fire Chief for Harlan Fire Rescue and with me is Debbie, Fire Chief Hon Nelson, who is in charge of operations. So he's gonna speak to some of the operational aspects of this update. So with that, I'd like to start just real quick, just to give a quick overview of what Harlan Fire Rescue is and how Lemon Grove Fire Department plays into it. Harlan Fire Rescue is a joint powers agreement between the cities of Lemon Grove, Loma Lisa and Elcalo Fire Departments. And there's a management team made of personnel from all three cities who manages the three separate fire departments. Altogether, Harlan Fire Rescue has eight fire stations, one of which is here in Lemon Grove, our station 10. We have 118 firefighters and 12 non-safety fire personnel between the three fire departments. Next slide, please. Harlan Fire Rescue is one of the busiest agencies in the county when it comes to fire protection and fire service. Last year, between the three cities, Harlan Fire Rescue responded to 32,000, over 32,000 calls for service. And I apologize for the graphics, but at the bottom there where it shows Lemon Grove and there's little yellow dots that depicts all the calls that Lemon Grove fire agent responded to and calls that were generated by Lemon Grove City proper. Next, the strategic goals for Harlan Fire Rescue, Lemon Grove Fire Department, continue to be the same. We want to make sure that we have a resilient organization, a resilient community, so we can respond to all those calls for service and also make sure that our communities are able to be resilient when emergencies happen and disasters happen. The second strategic goal is providing the best service with available resources that we have available to us. Next, I'm gonna turn this over to Chief Nelson to talk about operational goals.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, I'm gonna try and provide a little bit of perspective on your Lemon Grove firefighters and your fire station in your city. Just kind of as a quick review, every day we staff two fire engines with three people on each of those engines for a total of six people. Every day of the year, 24 hours a day. Specifically, over the past year, we were very lucky and very fortunate to be able to promote one of your Lemon Grove captains to the rank of battalion chief within Harlan Fire Rescue. Battalion Chief Chris Wilson, with his marine background, has done an exemplary job in just his few first short months. He spent approximately four months in administrative battalion chief position, doing work that affects all of our three cities and all of our three citizens. That was where we were able to really train him up on the administrative parts of the job. And earlier this month, the beginning of February, he moved to be one of our three ship battalion chiefs, to where he's on duty 24/7 on his assigned ship and he's responsible for our fire engines, not only Lemon Grove, but also Loma Lisa and Elcalo. So it really is a testament to the firefighters of Lemon Grove to be able to produce such a fine employee and have him be part of our team. Next slide, please. Additionally, just kind of as a review for the staffing on Engine 10 and 210. Each day, we do have six people, two of them are fire captains, one on each engine, two of them are fire engineers, one on each engine responds for driving and operating apparatus and two of them are firefighter paramedics. So in order to fill that across the three ships, we do need a total of 13 people. We currently have one vacancy due to Chief Wilson's promotion. We are currently in a promotional process, which we have chief entries tomorrow with a very solid group, and so we're hopeful to be able to fill that position shortly.
Next slide, please. Next, I want to talk about ISO rating. Harlan Fire Rescue and Lemon Grove Fire Department, we are really fortunate to have ISO Class 1 rating. That is something that is really difficult to get and the only reason we're able to get it and be able to hold on to this because of the collaboration that we have and one we're doing. Currently, we are going through a five-year review, trying to maintain our ISO 1 classification. What it is, is it's a third-party evaluation of community fire protection capabilities. The rating is used to serve the insurance industry in setting premiums, so the higher the rating, I mean the lower the rating, one is the best rating you can get. The best, the better it is for your insurance rate, for the community, for the businesses overall, because this is the rating that's being used. And ISO rating is comprised of our department operations, water district capabilities, and just a lot of the scrutiny that's coming out of LA fires. We have a great relationship with our water district, which is Felix Water, and they are a huge collaborator in making sure that we are able to maintain our ISO 1 rating. So whether there's any questions about the ability of the water department, by us having ISO 1 rating, that tests the fact that we have a robust water delivery system. And last but not least, dispatch services. So as we talked about the scale a little bit, it's 10 to 1 or 1 to 10, 1 being the best. Throughout the nation, there are approximately 40,000 jurisdictions that have been reviewed by ISO and less than 1% are able to give us one rating. So we are in the 1%, right now. Next slide, please. This is a visual picture of kind of how this is broken down, how the ISO rating is broken down. Large portion of it is fire department operations, which is 47.4%. Next, rating area is water, as we talked about, then there's community risk production and dispatch. And one of the focuses is making sure the fire department is able to provide the services that we say that we're here to provide and making sure we have resilience. And one of the areas that we have been getting rated on or looked at is having adequate frontline and reserve apparatus to make sure that we do have the resilience. Next slide. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Chief Nelson.
A couple more things here to kind of provide another window into your fire department operation. That 4,651 number, that represents the total calls that we ran last year in Lemon Grove. What's interesting about that, if you take our three cities in Harlan Fire Rescue GPA, all three of our cities land in the top five in terms of number of calls ran compared to number of residents. So the three cities in Harlan Fire Rescue truly are doing a lot more with less compared to other cities. And Lemon Grove, I think by the demonstration of that number, it needs a high-class fire department and we believe that we do have one. If you look at some other items on there, your Lemon Grove firefighters are meeting our expectation of a two-minute average turnout time. And that's basically when the call comes in, they're out the door in two minutes or less. Some of those calls before they can leave the station, they're required to put on specialty PPE for a structured fire or a water rescue or an automobile accident or a loved man fire. And that does take some time, but as you can see by the top right number, that is the highest average training hour per member across our three cities. Your Lemon Grove firefighters are putting in the time to stay well-trained and ready to respond. The bottom number, our average total response time, just includes dispatch time, prep time or turnout time, as well as the time it takes to drive there. We're always trying to get that number lower. Unfortunately, from the day that our fire stations were designed and built in their locations, there's been a lot of changes in additional infrastructure and, as we probably all have experienced, traffic. And that does cause us to have delayed responses. We do our best to work around that, firefighters know the routes of response very well in the city, but we still do struggle, elementary municipality and the county struggles with that.
Next slide, please. And here's just a breakdown of different calls that Lemon Grove firefighters responded to. Majority of the calls were medical or EMS calls, 3,751 calls were EMS calls in Lemon Grove. Next, largest segment is ambulance only, so this is a lower acuity level medical call where there is no need for paramedic ambulance, I mean paramedics to go there and the fire engine to go there. It's something, it's somewhat a new program that Harlan Fire Rescue is experiencing with. We have the ability to do some call triaging at dispatch level and we realized, we talked about it initially, we were trying to maximize the resources at our disposal. If there is no need for fire engine to go, if we can downgrade the call to where it's ambulance only, then we're gonna try to do that. Not every call qualifies for that, so really what we have been trying to do is trying to match up callers' needs with the most appropriate level of service and care. And the rest of the pie chart, we had 14 rescues, 20 others material calls, 137 RRL calls, 193 fire calls, 320 traffic lesions and 216 service calls, just calls for service. Next slide. Next, I just wanted to give a quick update on Lemon Grove fleet status. Really, really appreciative of the new fire engine that we've received in 2023. However, time doesn't stop for anybody and as we're marching along, we realize that sooner or later, we're gonna have to look at and start planning for another fire engine to replace our aging fleet. The National Fire Protection Association recommends transitioning. And the ratings on the right, I'm gonna try to explain what the ratings are and how we came about this. So National Fire Protection Association standard recommends transitioning frontline engines after 15 years of service to reserve status and replacing the reserve apparatus after 25 years of service or 150,000 miles. Harlan Fire Rescue is currently following the 15-year frontline fire engine service recommendation. Just to kind of explain a little more about the reserve apparatus, the reserve apparatus must be able to perform exactly at the same level as a frontline fire engine. The strategy is really we're trying to get the most service life out of the fire engine, especially as they get older, we try to not eat them up as much so we can get as much lifespan out of it. But it doesn't mean that it is an apparatus that can just sit in the back lot and deteriorate. It gets checked daily, making sure that it's ready to respond. And the reason why we do have a reserve apparatus is because there's times when the other two apparatus have to go in for service. There's a preventative maintenance program that we need to make sure we keep up and so we can get the most out of the fleet. So currently, Engine 10, which is the newest engine, I'm sorry, Engine 10, which is the 2014 engine, is 11 years old and has over 100,000 miles. Engine 210, which is the newest engine, is coming up in two years and it has 13,000 miles. And then our current reserve engine, which is Engine 310, it has 168,000 miles and it's 8 years old. So one of the things we did, we knew that we have some challenges coming up, one of the things we did last year was trying to plan to have a stopgap measure and we entered into, we went with hello ES to host if an OES Type 1 fire engine. That allows us some room to time until rates to secure the fleet. One of the challenges that we are seeing right now, industry-wide, this is not Lemon Grove specific, but even if we purchase a fire engine right now, the lead time to take to deliver our fire engine is 45 to 48 months. So it really makes us to try to plan ahead because otherwise, the time is gonna just slip by and we're gonna be really scrambled. Next slide. Overall, San Diego County relies on, on the closest unit in concert, what it means is, we all know in Southern California, but specifically in San Diego County, that we're here to serve our community and serve our republic. Public doesn't care what the head says, they wanna get a fire engine, they wanna get help as soon as they can. And so we get the closest unit to the call based on automatic vehicle location device. The last year, Lemon Grove Fire Department provided automatic aid on 704 occasions. Next slide. Next slide. Last year, Lemon Grove Fire Department received automatic aid, um, at eight hundred and thirty occasions. So the goal is to kind of make sure that there's a balance that no, no agency is getting taken advantage of, but also making sure that, that, that we're working seamlessly and then trying to make sure we're supporting each other. Next slide, please. Next, I wanted to highlight our CPR saves. As we talked about the, what the services that, that we provide and where we make a difference, one of them is obvious, fire calls and second, EMS calls, and second parties, the CPRs or, or serious medical aids when somebody is having a cardiac arrest. Last year, there were twenty-six cardiac arrests in Lemon Grove, and we had five successful resuscitation events. So that, because the sample size is fairly small, the year before, we had six successful, uh, resuscitation attempts. The percentage overall went down, but we continue to work with our community when we do public outreach and education. Our goal is to try to get as many people to learn hands-only CPR because that's where we save lives. That's behind you there, there's an automatic, uh, he's going to defibrillator. Using that and, and hands-on CPR, that's what saves lives. Then making sure that we have early access to the nine-one-one system and have our resources available to come and take over vice center CPR and, and have successful outcomes. Next slide, please. Next, I just wanted to highlight real quick, give the programs that we have for the department. We have a training program with the main focus of skills maintenance, succession, and, uh, new firefighter initial training. Next, we have peer support. This is a behavioral health-focused, uh, peer program, making sure that our, our firefighters have the resources available, they can talk to each other, get help that they might need, uh, behavioral help for, uh, for some difficult calls. Next, we have a wellness program. We do an annual physical for all our firefighters. And for making, to make sure that, that we catch any medical conditions quickly before they, they get to a point where we can't, they get, some, some of the conditions that we have caught are cancers, cardiac-related issues, and also cardiac pulmonary issues. And, and one of the main, main, maybe parts of the wellness physical is making sure that our cardiac pulmonary systems are functioning correctly because of the strain that job brings and having to wear self-contained, self-contained breathing apparatus. Next, I will talk a little more about grants. Here's the next slide. And next, we talk about our reserve firefighter program. As we build resilience into the organization, we, we wanna make sure that we have succession plan. And the reserve firefighter program and fire explorer program, those are our succession plan, making sure that we capture local youth reemployment, see if they're interested in the fire service, and then provide a pathway from fire explorer to reserve firefighter to the, uh, full-blown firefighter paramedic. Next program I want to highlight is Urban Search and Rescue, uh, program. We have members, specifically engineer Travis Medina, who is a member of California Task Force Safe. This is a pneumatic urban search and rescue type one team. And he volunteers his time to go and train with the team. And this team gets deployed throughout the nation through catastrophic events. Most recently, we had some of the Task Force Safe members go up to Los Angeles to do some, uh, search and recovery efforts. Last but not least is our search program. This is Community Response Team. This is head up by our emergency preparedness coordinator, Andy McKellar. This is a volunteer program, and they support our department with public education, special events, and God forbid if there is, you know, large disasters, they'll come in and help us out with different aspects of, of support function. Next slide, please. I did want to highlight the grant program, just because that is really impactful for our operations. This highlights the grants that we have applied for and currently managed and we have actually received. So, uh, these are Pneumoc brands. So over the last year, and then a lot of these grants, it takes several years to actually get the funds, purchase the equipment, and close out the big brands. But over the last, last year, over the last year, that's, 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 okay. Over the last year, we received over seventy thousand dollars in grant funding to offset our operational costs. Next couple of slides, we talk about, uh, give significant events from, from the last year. On the left, I think this is an event all, all of us are trying to forget, but just about a year ago, we had floods. And it definitely overwhelmed not just first responder services, but also the infrastructure. In Lemon Grove, we had over seventeen water arrests. And to kind of contrast that, we talked about the fires that we had. On the right, we have a picture of a structured fire in Lemon Grove where the training of our personnel really paid off. Our firefighters got there in, uh, less than five minutes, actually four minutes, thirty-seven seconds. And they had that fire specifically, that's in that picture, they had it knocked down in eleven minutes from when the call came in. Next slide, please. I wanna finish out on some really positive things that happened in last year. On the left, there are pictures of, uh, the new apparatus bay doors. And this really highlights the teamwork and collaboration that, that we have in the city. We're just one team amongst many teams, uh, in the city. We wouldn't have been able to do this without the support from the city mayor's office, public works, finance department. But, uh, those doors, they make a huge difference because when they were not working or had to fix them all the time, we're not able to get out, out of the station quick because we have to make sure they come down or, or we have to go out the back way. So this is where we make the difference, where every second counts. This, this is where we make the difference. And on the right, there's a newly finished, uh, turnout storage area. So turnouts are, are the person protected here, firefighters wear. They are really pricey, and they also have certain aspects to them that we need to store them in a separate area. They do contain carcinogens, and they need to be in an area that is protected from UV lighting. And so, once again, this is a collaboration between public works and, and the city staff to be able to get this, uh, storage area. Huge thank you to the council and everybody else who supported this effort. Next slide, please. All right, that's the end of my presentation. So if there's any question, Chief Nelson and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Chief Ko and also Deputy Chief Nelson. It's great to have you here. And I'll ask the council if they have any questions. Councilmember Elton Marano, do you have any questions?
All right, I do. For, first congrats on your ISO rating. It's a big deal. And, um, yeah, for, for you guys to be one percent, you know, if you have that rating, it's, it's pretty amazing. Thank you for, for your service and all that.
I have a question regarding the, um, the automatic aid locations, uh, the difference between what was given and received. It's about a hundred and twenty-six. Do we receive any payment for what we give, or do we pay anything for what we receive?
No, there is an automatic aid agreement amongst fire agencies in San Diego County. So there is no payment. We understand collectively that that's the right thing to do to serve the community.
What do you think, uh, we can do to improve or to work on that number of, of connections that we receive versus the ones that we give? Because we're receiving more than we're, than we're giving.
It is fairly dynamic. Last year, we probably provided more than we received. So from year to year, it fluctuates. The, the sample size is not that large. And so overall, working with our colleagues, with our neighboring agencies, this is, at least at, at a fire department level, it's not a concern. We know that there's gonna be years when we're gonna be receiving, and then there's gonna be years when, when we're gonna be supporting. A lot of it ties into, especially when we have fire calls, we need to have an effective fire force of seventeen personnel at scene, a single-family structured fire. And, and just looking at that, if we can cut down, you know, the number of fires we respond, then we have less need to rely on our neighboring agencies. But overall, I would say we're doing really well. Lemon Grove is doing really well as far as automatic aid goes.
Thank you again. All right, Councilmember Fied, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Hurd, do you?
Uh, yes, I have just a couple of questions. Um, I, I caught the mileage on all the engines except for the new one that we got, the CALOES recently.
I will have to get back to you because it wasn't a brand-new engine. It was a, if I, my memory doesn't, it was a 2006 engine. So it is fairly, um, old engine. However, it's, I don't think that was available, and, and it is in a serviceable condition right now. But I will get back to you with that.
And I mean, again, absolutely to have an extra one, no matter what age, this is better than none, right? Um, how is that engine compared to the nineteen ninety-seven and the two thousand and fourteen as far as, does it? I think it's on loan for so long, correct?
We are currently in an agreement, uh, for at least ten years. And, and at that point, I mean, CALOES, they, they, they own the engine. If they have different needs, they can come ask for the engine. But as of right now, we're in an agreement for at least ten years.
Okay, and is that engine similar to those other engines where, uh, despite the mileage and the age, as far as the service calls that they can, they can handle?
Correct. It is a type one engine. That means it has, uh, certain pumping capabilities, carries a certain amount of water, and it has a certain amount of air hose and has seating for two on four.
Mayor Bozen Mendoza?
Close up here. Um, the only question I had, um, and thank you very much for this report. When we have a good ISO rating, does that, um, does that help us all with our insurance rates?
You're absolutely correct. It should help us with our insurance rate. That is the rating that insurance companies rely on. I can't speak for every single one of them, but that is the nationwide standard. Because ISO stands for Insurance Services Organization. That is their true organization.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming. I just wanted, yesterday, there was a New York Times article out about the cost of these engines. And it says, it talked about how Wall Street has really influenced this, and they have, there's really three, only three companies in the entire nation that are making fire engines. And so it is really driving up the costs. And it also said they had a four-billion-dollar backlog, um, in, in request for fire engines. Um, and so that helped me put into perspective, uh, the universe that you're dealing with when you're talking to us about the lead time that we need to have, and we're thinking about bringing in a new fire engine. So I really appreciate that you pursued so aggressively the CALOES fire engine so that we have some, some time to deal with that. But, um, to the community and to the other council members, this is something that we can't wait for. We need to be thinking of this sooner rather than later because of the lead times that it takes to get these engines, um, when we need them. Uh, you don't wait until you need them, you start planning now to be able to do that. So I really appreciate that. Um, and then I also just wanted to do a huge shout-out. Thank you, um, for your investment, not only helping with the local, and, you know, the seventeen water rescues were a big deal. The floods there are committing really hard. Uh, and we, we saw you guys have that fire in October, and not just that, but you sacrificed your time and went up to Los Angeles and helped the people there, um, remaining in health as well. So just thank you so much. I know you deal with carcinogens. I know you deal with health risks and health factors, and it is not an easy job. So thank you for taking care of the people we love most.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Next up, we will have the Sheriff Department's annual report. Um, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Kenneth Seal to present the Sheriff's Department annual report.
I'm a mayor, city council, city staff, thank you for having me. Ken Seal, patrol sergeant at the Lemon Grove substation. Currently, we have a total service area of just under four square miles and serve a population of over twenty-seven thousand citizens. Chief Ko mentioned, we have the Lemon Grove substation flooded back in January of twenty twenty-four. Currently, our deputies are operating out of the Lemon Grove Fire Department. Big thanks to Chief Nelson and Chief Ko for their hospitality and allowing us to use their space while our station's being rebuilt. As for our supervision, crime analyst, crime prevention, and therapist staff, we're currently operating out of our Rancho San Diego station. So for Lemon Grove station staffing, uh, we currently have one lieutenant assigned, Lieutenant Joe Berry, who's currently at a leadership academy, our leadership FBI academy in Virginia. He'll be back mid-March. Um, myself, the, uh, the one patrol sergeant at the substation. Sergeant William Price is our traffic sergeant. Uh, we currently have twelve patrol deputies assigned. Two of them are currently on training. We have, uh, three traffic deputies, one motor deputy, as well as two detectives assigned to our substation for sworn staff. For professional staff, we have a senior office assistant, as well as two additional office assistants, uh, one being our traffic secretary. And we have a community service officer, a crime analyst, and a crime prevention specialist. As for additional investigative resources, we have our major crime division, which would include homicide, child abuse, family protection, financial crimes, and juvenile services, to name a few, as well as our narcotics and gangs division, which includes our narcotics task force, human trafficking task force, gang task force, our fugitive task force, as well as our border crime suppression team. For additional support resources, we have our air support asteroid helicopter, which you'll sometimes see flying overhead, as well as our drone team, our K-nine unit, our, uh, special enforcement detail, SWAT team, search and rescue, emergency planning, as well as our senior volunteer. So for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four, in terms of our national incident-based reporting system, uh, everything's trending down, which is, you know, as the sheriff talks, more we like to say. Um, so neighbors looks at two primary factors, crimes against persons, as well as crimes against property. Overall, both crimes against persons and crimes against property have trended down since two thousand and twenty-two. They've remained steady, but it trended down to the multiple. So on our next slide, a little bit more of the aggregate on what we're, uh, you know, dealing with in terms of crimes here in the city of Lemon Grove. So for crimes against persons, uh, back in two thousand and twenty-one, our crimes against persons was five hundred and thirty-one. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, it was three hundred and sixty-three, with the majority being assault offenses, uh, at three hundred and forty-five here in the city. As for crimes against property, uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, it was eight hundred and ninety-five. Uh, and in two thousand and twenty-four, it was six hundred and twenty-one, with the majority of those crimes being, uh, larceny-related offenses. Three things that this table doesn't capture, um, are DV-related incidents. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had two hundred and twenty-three DV-related incidents. And in two thousand and twenty-four, uh, we had a hundred and sixty-nine. So we're going in the direction we like to be going. Uh, there were no hate crimes reported during calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. And deputies seized a total of two hundred and thirty-three firearms, uh, during day-to-day operations, three of them being, uh, related to the crime. So for calls for service, our Lemon Grove deputies responded to eleven thousand, six hundred and twelve calls for service. Uh, and in addition to calls for service, uh, deputies conducted five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven deputy-initiated actions. That's going to be your pedestrian contacts, your vehicle stops, things of that nature. Our calls for service increased about one point six percent in two thousand and twenty-four, between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And on, on average, deputies responded to about thirty-one calls for service and conducted about fourteen deputy-initiated actions per day. So our deputies made a total of one thousand, ninety-two arrests during two thousand and twenty-four. The sheriff's office continues to use the intelligence-like policing model, which aims to, you know, utilize our crime analysis and make sure we're putting our deputies, um, where they need to be to have the most impact on the crime issues and trends that we're seeing, uh, here in the city of Lemon Grove. Uh, deputies from Lemon Grove, the substation averaged about ninety-one arrests during, uh, ninety-one arrests per month in two thousand and twenty-four. So our traffic unit consists of six positions. Again, our traffic sergeant, William Price, along with four deputies and one traffic community service officer. The unit's overall goal is to prevent traffic accidents and increase overall traffic safety. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, uh, our traffic unit issued one thousand, three hundred and two citations. Uh, and in two thousand and twenty-four, there was a hundred and eighty-nine traffic collisions. We're unique in the city of Lemon Grove, and we're such a small station. And sometimes we deal with, you know, staffing issues that our traffic deputies will shift their focus to assist our patrol deputies during times of high-volume calls. So it's, it's a, it's a very, um, it's a very good relationship between our patrol operations and our traffic operations. And they work together very, very well to make sure we're, you know, the needs of our citizens here in Lemon Grove. Next slide. So your serial collision hotspots, well, just more of a visual aid for you guys to take a look at. It is what we would expect on our main thoroughfares, Broadway, San Miguel, Palm, Lemon Grove Avenue in Massachusetts. That's where the, uh, highest density of traffic collisions are going to be because they're our, our primary thoroughfare moving through the city. But again, just something to look at for two thousand and twenty-four. So Proposition Thirty-Six was the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Production Act, which took effect on the seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, there's a few things it covers. The first one is going to be theft-related offenses. It allows for the aggregation of losses during multiple thefts. Um, before Proposition Thirty-Six, if, uh, someone were to conduct multiple thefts over multiple days, the individual amount of the loss would determine if it would be a misdemeanor crime or felony crime. Like, in a case like this, if we're dealing with organized retail theft or someone who is a chronic thief or chronic retail thief, and you can start adding up the losses and ultimately move into, you know, a felony-level loss if, 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 you know, the individual's chronic enough. Uh, the second one is penny theft or shoplifting with two priors. These are two conviction priors. So if someone has been convicted of, um, multiple offenses, convicted of multiple offenses, and they commit what would have previously been considered a misdemeanor-level offense, it could be charged as a felony based on Proposition Thirty-Six. Uh, same goes with hard drugs. Um, these are conviction offenses. Um, prior to Proposition Thirty-Six, uh, where a lot of our hard narcotics possession-related offenses were misdemeanors, um, if our deputies are contacting individuals with multiple felony convictions for, uh, narcotics offenses, uh, they can be arrested for felony-level offenses. And then finally, this adds fentanyl to illicit drugs prohibited while armed with a loaded operable firearm. I know it still is, but years ago, and again, it still is, but fentanyl was a huge topic years ago. It seemed like it was lame to a degree. But it seems like our legislature is doing a, a good job of catching up with, you know, how much of an epidemic the fentanyl issue has been, and they're adding divisions that you said, um, you know, targeted. So Proposition Thirty-Six arrests since its inception. When I made this PowerPoint, we were sitting at, uh, two of the theft-related offenses. I spoke with our crime analyst this morning. Um, we're currently sitting at four since Proposition Thirty-Six went into effect. Um, and as of putting this PowerPoint together, um, it was nine on the screen, but we're up to ten. I have to talk to our analyst this morning. It's a little too soon to see what the impact is, but deputies are, are actively, um, you know, putting in to, to go use. So some of our challenges, um, one of our challenges is retail theft. Um, during calendar year two thousand and twenty-four, uh, there were four hundred and forty-two calls for service related to theft in general. The majority of that is going to be some type of retail theft, theft in general. Uh, this, based on the calls for service per calendar year, this accounts for just under four percent of the calls for service that our deputies are dealing with. And to put it in a little bit more perspective, um, this is an average of at least one call per day that the deputies are responding to related to some type of theft-related offense. Another challenge is our homeless population. Um, during calendar year four, or, excuse me, during calendar year twenty-four, there were fourteen hundred and twenty-one calls for service that had some relation to, um, a transient complaint, a homeless complaint. It's how it's coded in our, in our CAD system. Uh, but fourteen, fourteen hundred and twenty-two times that transient or homeless was mentioned in our, our CAD documentation system. Um, to put that in perspective, that's about twelve percent of the calls for service deputies respond to during, uh, calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. Um, and about, and just under four times per day on average, that our deputies are, um, responding to calls for service regarding our homeless population. This is always a hot-button issue, uh, vehicle impact requests. Um, obviously, we get, uh, a, a huge need from the public to, you know, deal with and address our vehicle impact requests. Um, our private units, our patrol deputies, our prime, excuse me, our CSO, you know, do their best to keep up with the, uh, requests, working within the municipal code and working within the requirements of the seventy-two-hour tag notifications and the fact that, you know, sometimes the people that leave the vehicles parked for a certain period of time kind of understand, you know, how the process works. And that tag will go onto their vehicle, it'll go outside, they'll move five feet in front, and it resets that seventy-two-hour, it sets that, basically, it resets that seventy-two-hour view. So, um, we're aware and we, you know, especially our traffic unit does, you know, everything we can to, you know, address those issues as they come to us, directly as they come to us, uh, through the city of Lemon Grove. This goes hand-in-hand with public demand. Um, obviously, the sheriff's department is, it's important to us as a sheriff's department, you call for a deputy, you get a deputy. Um, depending on the time of day, sometimes our staffing is better than other times. But, you know, we're constantly doing what we can to address public service needs of the city of Lemon Grove. And again, that goes in with the staff, or the last job we deal with. Next slide. So I wanted to get in front of this, because it's obviously a very hot-button issue, um, in the current climate. Um, the San Diego County Sheriff's Office does not enforce immigration. Deputies don't enforce immigration law. Deputies will not ask about immigration status. Uh, the San Diego Sheriff's Office encourages every member of our community to contact us if they believe they've been victimized. And it's our goal to ensure the safety and security of everyone in our community. I'd like to highlight just some of our continued partnership. We currently have and have always had a very solid partnership with, with NPS, uh, with the goal of providing safety and security to our, uh, public transit matters. Obviously, we have two public depots that go through the city of Lemon Grove. Well, there is a Lemon Grove Public Depot in, uh, Massachusetts. Um, our continued partnership with the California Highway Patrol regarding retail theft. A lot of people don't know that the, most people think that the California Highway Patrol is seen on the highway, doing what the California Highway Patrol does, what we visually see of the officers in the uniform and car making those traffic stops on the roadway, dealing with traffic collisions. They actually have a large task force that deals specifically with organized retail theft. Um, and we've had a lot of success working with the California Highway Patrol and their task force. Um, and we will host them, they will come into our city, and they will, um, you know, work with loss prevention, the agents at the Home Depot, our food supplies, and some of our neighboring retailers that even though might not be directly in the city of Lemon Grove, they tend to be the same vendors that we see kind of, you know, coming in and out of the city. So keeping that relationship going, keeping that, you know, relationship alive is really been a big deal, um, for the substation. And of course, our continued partnership with the city, um, and specifically public works, PIZI, Michelle, and regarding our homeless and homeless concerns. My deputies and PIZI's personnel have, you know, they're talking about it all the time, just making sure we're, you know, staying in front of the concerns of the community, staying in front of the homeless and campers and kind of, you know, we'll pop up here and then pop up there. And we, we kind of feel like, you know, we're trying to get in front of them as much as we possibly can, you know, working in partnership with the public. So that is it for my presentation.
Thank you so much for, for coming. And, uh, I'd like to go over to my fellow councilmembers and see if anyone has any, uh, questions or comments. Uh, councilmember Gideon, Alton Marano?
Hi, thank you for your service and for the presentation. I do have a question regarding, um, overall crime is climbing, which is a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in the county, but there was a report that San-Dad, um, came out with regarding crime in two thousand and twenty-three, San Diego, I'm sorry, Lemon Grove and Delmar, the city of San Diego, Lemon Grove and Delmar had the highest crime per capita. Uh, can you explain how that's calculated and what all entails and why it puts us up at the top?
So with a community like Delmar that has a population of just under four thousand and a community like the city of Lemon Grove that has a population of just over twenty-seven thousand, what will generally, and not to say that those reports are inaccurate, but sometimes not understanding exactly where it comes from, understanding that it's one crime per one thousand residents. And when we have a significant crime of violence or a significant crime series, when it's tabulated against, you know, a lower population like, you know, the community of Delmar or a lower population like the city of Lemon Grove, sometimes it will really affect those crime statistics. Whereas if those same events were happening in our larger jurisdictions, um, it, it doesn't quite affect the needle as much. Um, we'll also see where the San-Dad reports tabulates all of our unincorporated communities. So you have some communities that are, you know, generally going to have higher crime rates, and they're tabulated against some of our unincorporated communities that generally have lower crime rates. So it's kind of, it ups the population and it doesn't always reflect exactly, um, you know, what is actually happening, if that makes sense. Not to say that it's, they're not, not to say that it's incorrect, but sometimes, again, the smaller jurisdiction, it's more visible based on, you know, how they tabulate the results.
What I'm understanding is that the way that it's calculated, it's not like apples for apples.
It's not apples for apples. It is this crime based on a population of twenty-seven thousand, this crime in Delmar based on a population of four thousand. Whereas if a homicide were to occur in the city of San Diego, the population is going to be in the millions. So it doesn't hit quite as hard for that individual crime.
It doesn't correlate the same. So if we have, uh, a crime here, for example, murder here, um, in the year, and we've had...
Three.
Three.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we have one more, it goes up by twenty-five percent. But if the city of San Diego has one more, it goes up by maybe one percent.
And, and, don't quote me on the percentages, but like, again, it's, it's per one thousand residents. So that one crime per one thousand residents is tabulated twenty-seven times for twenty-seven thousand residents. Whereas for a larger jurisdiction like the city of Lemon Grove, it's a, it's going to show as a much smaller percentage.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah, makes sense. Um, makes sense now. When I read that report, I was like shocked. And I was like, oh, my goodness, we have to have a safe city. Like, that is, you know, utmost importance. But then when I listened to it and asked some questions, I realized, oh, we're not that bad. I just wanted clarification. And again, thank you for explaining that and for your service.
Absolutely, thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Alton?
Congratulations.
Councilmember Alton, I would like to add, when you see those San-Dad's point, uh, reports, and we do provide those, I do provide those to the city council when they do come out, look at the wrong numbers. That tells the story better than the statistical analysis. Because as the sergeant explained, one can skew it high for a small jurisdiction like Lemon Grove, Delmar, Solana Beach, but, uh, one can't skew it high for larger jurisdictions, say like in El Cajon or the city of San Diego, or even Carlsbad, um, because of the population. Statistically, you remember statistics class from college? Statistically valid, but it really doesn't tell the story for smaller jurisdictions.
Thank you. Councilmember Faiad, any questions?
Uh, I don't have any questions, but I just have a comment. I was getting off work this morning and I saw, uh, your team and I saw Izzy's team, uh, on North Avenue kind of taking care of, uh, the homeless who can't be there. And I just want to say, my comment is, is I just want to thank you guys for treating, uh, them with dignity and respect. Uh, they're people just like us. And, and they're just, you know, they're going through tough times and, and they're, they're dealing with, uh, some stuff that none of us can even fathom or imagine. Uh, so I just wanted to say, I mean, I, I'm stuck at the red light and, and I'm grateful that I was because I got the... that I was because I got to see, uh, just Public Works were hand in hand with your guys. I mean, you guys, I mean, you're, you're on the ground petting their cats. And then, I mean, I thought that was just a cool thing because so many times you guys get the bad rap for being the bad guy. And so I just want to say thank you to your team and to Izzy's team. I know you guys are working, I mean, I've seen that thing hit multiple times, you know, you guys are cleaning it out, they go back and cleaning it out, they go back. And just the amount of, uh, risk that you guys have to go do to, you know, to, uh, enforce, you know, that, uh, it just, it just makes a difference in our community. So I just want to say thank you to Izzy and yourself and your team for, uh, for, for all that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Council member, Gloria. You, I know you didn't go over it much, but I want to give you the opportunity to, right now, um, the senior volunteer patrol, how many people do you have currently enrolled, if you know, and can you tell the public how they can sign up?
So our senior volunteer patrol runs a program known as Jana, which is You Are Not Alone. It's an opportunity for our senior volunteers, which are generally, um, our retired population, more elderly population that will volunteer with the sheriff's office and, um, go out to community members that have signed up. And again, currently we have three signed up in the city of Lemon Grove. Um, if anyone has interest in signing up themselves or have a, you know, a, you know, an elderly mother or father that would be interested in the program, you can go to our website, s d sheriff dot org. The information is there to sign up, along with, um, our senior volunteers do a vacation home check for the residents here in the city of Lemon Grove, to check to make sure that, um, doors are still locked, nothing appears to have, you know, break, whatever occurred, anything appears to be as it should be. Um, and of course, if, if our senior volunteers notice anything that doesn't look, um, correct, doesn't look consistent, it should be, they'll contact the deputies to go out and do a local check or secure the check at that location.
All right, one more question. Okay. Um, currently I've noticed that there is, uh, two large encampments, one, um, on the on-ramp at Federal, uh, by the Burger King.
Yes.
And then right adjacent to that, uh, behind the businesses on the off-ramp. They, they're crossing over to the other side now. I noticed they were even like cross, like pedestrian crossing on the on-ramp off-ramp, so it's very dangerous. In a case like that, who do you call to report it? Is it Caltrans, is it, uh, Highway Patrol, is it you?
So it depends, so at the end of the day, if a citizen of Lemon Grove, you know, wants law enforcement services, they can always contact the sheriff's office. We deal with a, a weird boundary line, a weird delineator where some of the property is owned by the state of California. Um, if it's on the north side of the fence line on the ninety-four, it's going to be the state of California property. If it's in, for a short period after the south line, sometimes it's owned by the state, it's done with by Caltrans and the California Highway Patrol, um...
Tough.
It's tough. And oftentimes we'll see that the state will go and do a transient encampment cleanup and then they move to the Lemon Grove side and then Public Works and my deputies will work together and, you know, you know, work on a transient encampment and they kind of, you know, move back to the state's side. And so it's, it's that constant give and take with compassion and trying to accommodate as best as we can with the understanding that, you know, these individuals are, are down on their luck and at the end of the day, they're part of our, they're part of our community, they're part of our population. We have to do our best to, you know, accommodate them. Um, but on the other side, on the other side, make sure that, you know, help and sanitation of our community members is also maintained and, you know, our business owners up and down the roadway, so it's, it's that constant type of work.
I just worry about their safety, because of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Of course, if it's a situation where, um, it's, it's an emergency, that's for nine-one-one or four, it's a situation where, um, it's something that the deputies get to sooner than later, but not quite right into the level of nine-one-one call that's over here on the Lemon Grove line. Um, and the same for, and if it's, our C H P calls from nine-one-one, they're routed to C H P and they'll dispatch.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Lieutenant Mendoza.
Hi, thank, thank you so much for your report. I'm, I'm going to ask you two questions that I know the answer to.
Yes, ma'am.
But, um, I think they're, they're questions that, um, that the public has and you can explain it better than I can. So, um, we hear a lot of complaints, particularly around holidays of, of excessive fireworks and, um, gun, and gunshots. And peo-, and people are concerned because they call, um, say, somebody in my neighborhood, I don't know what house, shooting off fireworks and I hear gunshots and it's near my house and I'm really concerned. Why, why is this difficult for, um, the sheriff's department to, to enforce?
So it's difficult for us to enforce because depending on, um, the level of the crime, whether it's a fraction or misdemeanor or a felony crime, um, in a, in a situation of a misdemeanor crime, such as fireworks or, you know, discharging a firearm, things of that nature, um, a deputy would need to observe the violation before taking enforcement action. If a deputy didn't observe the violation, it would require a citizen to sign a citizen's arrest declaration. Um, but I encourage everyone in the city of Lemon Grove to do is, and I, I mentioned it before, if you have a community safety concern, um, and you need a deputy to respond, contact us, that's what we're here for. Um, and my deputies will do their best to dissect the issue and address it within, you know, the, uh, you know, as appropriate within, you know, within the law. Um, some of the, the two nights we always have issues with is going to be July fourth and New Year's Eve. Obviously those nights, um, all, all the calls are about, you know, you know, fireworks, gunshots and, you know, in addition to all of the other, you know, calls for service that deputies deal with in terms of, you know, DUIs and domestic violence, whatever it may be, those types of calls are prioritized. So often with the call volume, you can see on some of these festive nights, um, by the time a deputy actually gets to that call for service, the fireworks have stopped and the gunshots are no longer heard, the reporting party doesn't know exactly where the gunshots are coming from, they don't know exactly where the fireworks are coming from. So while I'm always encouraged that the public to contact us, because at least it gives us a log in our, in our computer database, um, sometimes the deputies, you know, our hands are very tied in terms of being actually able to take that enforcement action, especially on those high, high, high call volume nights.
Thank you, thank you. And then the other complaint I hear about a lot is helicopter. And...
In regards to, would you be in there or?
And just like, why, why is it always flying over Lemon Grove? So that is the question. Why is it always, always flying over Lemon Grove?
So we're very fortunate with the sheriff's office. We have, um, there are two primary local law enforcement helicopters here in the county of San Diego. One is our Astrae helicopter and the other is the San Diego, San Diego Police Department's Able helicopter. Let's hear about both of these aerial programs, if they are both regional assets. Um, as long as the Astrae helicopter is available, they will do their best to respond to sheriff's office related requests. And the same for the San Diego Police Department, they will do their best to respond to San Diego Police Department requests. But both helicopters, and especially our Astrae helicopters, you know, go all over the county, all day, most of the night, you know, responding to, you know, calls to support our deputies from the air. And it's not always what, it's not always what the public fears, it's not always that, you know, that homicide suspect on the loose or that shooting suspect on the loose. More often than not, it's, you know, there's a, you know, a nine-year-old, you know, missing girl and we laugh, you know, mother or father last saw her in pink pants and she, you know, she ran away or parents, you know, lost track of her. And so having those regional assets up in the air is kind of a community service force multiplier. Um, so from the sheriff's office perspective, you know, I'm always happy when they respond because they're giving my deputies support in the field. I understand that especially during some of their operations, they fly lower than, you know, maybe would, you know, be as liked by our community because it, it is, you know, a lot of helicopters. I'm not sure that answered your question?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not because, um, you're, um, have a bigger presence in Lemon Grove than other counties of, of the county.
No, we have, so the Astrae helicopter is available to all municipal and, and all jurisdictions here in the county of San Diego, just like the Able helicopter with San Diego Police Department. And our deputies will call for aerial resources for a huge number of calls, you know, to support them, you know, in their efforts to, to cope with a, a safe resolution for whatever call they're given.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for coming. Uh, I just wanted to comment on the downward trend. I'm excited to see that, um, that we're, uh, seeing less crime than we have in past years, so that's a really good trend. Uh, and I really want the police department to be able to focus more on handling, um, real criminal events instead of dealing with homelessness. And I think our current strategy, um, as a city for homelessness has, has not been very helpful. Uh, what we've described tonight was basically a system of whack-a-mole and the current status quo is not working. Um, and I would like to see you, uh, you're getting about three to four calls a day, most days closer to four calls a day, just dealing, um, with issues that arise from our, um, community that is cap housing. And so I think one of the things that we can do as a city to support our, our law enforcement and our first responders better is to help lift that burden by finding better solutions to, to dealing with that problem. So I appreciate all the hard work that you and our Public Works staff and our fire department has done to be able to help us. Um, and so we'd like to see some more efforts go into that. Um, I also appreciated, uh, that you provided clarification, um, regarding immigration and its relationship with, uh, our local sheriff's department. Uh, it is really important that if people are being victimized by crime, that people feel comfortable in reaching out to law enforcement to report that. If we don't, that hurts all of us. Um, so thank you for taking the time to make sure that our community knows that each one of our citizens and our residents, no matter what their legal status is, should reach out to law enforcement if they are experiencing a crime. Um, and so that was really critical. And finally, um, we want you back in your home. So...
We do too.
Yeah, uh, a year ago, we saw images of the floods with the, the fire department presentation and it's been over a year now and we are eager to get you back into your substation. So I'd like to, I give some time to our city manager to give us a status update on where we're at and how, and kind of a timeline and when we can expect you to be back.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Madam, and city council members. Um, uh, at the request of the sheriff's department, we had to go back to our insurance provider to ask for some additional remediation for the temporary holding cells that we have there, um, because they do contain asbestos and we couldn't do the flooring, um, with the current flooring that is in the holding cell. So the insurance is working through that particular aspect with our current contract to do the remediation. Once that remediation is done, then we'll be able to provide the new flooring. The sheriff's service team will be doing an update in their I T cell. So we're hoping, um, to get everybody in by the end of this fiscal year. Um, we hope sooner than later, but remediation work, especially with asbestos, takes fairly long time and they haven't started that work yet. And, and so we have to do that first before they can do any other, um, other repairs at the sheriff's station. Conversely, on the basement where city staff works, as soon as the flooring is delivered, that will go in immediately and then we'll be able to bring our staff back into city hall instead of, again, sharing the sheriff's department and, um, the admin offices of the red section. So we're looking forward to that and hopefully we will get into later. It's just, the flooring has been on order since the beginning of January and it's still not delivered yet. So there is some, some backlog. There's a large amount of carpet and flooring that we, we ordered.
Thank you so much and we really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you so much. Uh, that concludes our presentations for this evening. Uh, next we will move on to our general public comment. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may express their concerns, not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Uh, please note that according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to the comments. So I know sometimes, um, it seems like we aren't responsive, but, uh, state law requires us not to talk about anything amongst ourselves that hasn't been properly agendized. Uh, but if you do want us to follow up or if you want to have, uh, further conversations, please make a note of that on your speaker slip or if you haven't already done so, just tell us when you're at the podium and give us a, a way to be able to contact you and we will reach out and follow up with you. Uh, each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. While speaking, please observe the green light, yellow light and red light as a timer. Uh, the red light indicates, uh, that the time is concluded for you to speak. We also have a very, um, non-sensitive mic, so you have to, uh, get right up on the mic and, and speak directly into the microphone or else we can't hear you. Uh, I might have to stop you if you're not doing that. I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to make sure we get you, these meetings are being recorded and we want to make sure that we capture your voice. Uh, so now we'll move on to the speakers. The first speaker we have is Teresa Rosie I. Prophet.
I'd like to rescind my public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Rosi, Rosie I. Prophet. Next we have John L. Wood.
Down L. Wood, uh, burst pump station. I feel that it's taking too long to be built through no fault of Public Works. Public management or council is keeping it out, in my opinion, just like when the first pump station was built. I would think that the city would want something that would last a long time. When you buy cheap parts, you get what you pay for. Um, next subject is the foot traffic along the creek is starting to pick up. And, um, that was a problem before, but the house burned down, got rebuilt. Um, I still haven't had, well, the city hasn't done anything about the tree trimming, it blew the trees, it belonged to Miller. And I told you about the branch that fell, it was thirteen feet long, the diameter was fourteen inches. It's a big branch. And I don't want to be out in the backyard again when one of those branches fall. Now, I don't know whose fault it is, but I heard that, um, law enforcement was on it or sent them a letter, whatever they do, but nothing's been done. Early soon, I hope, uh, we're going to have construction starting out there, uh, on the new pump station. And that is, I don't know, but it would be nice to have it taken care of. The creek during the last rainstorm was flowing very well until it got down to Central and Federal. And that's because the Mesa Labs has a bunch of stuff on the west side that needs to clean out. of stuff on the west side that needs to clean up. And that would be nice to have that. Thank you.
Next up, we have Brenda Hammond.
Hi, Brenda Hammond. I've been thinking a lot about the potential tiny homes that county wants to put on Troy and Sweetwater. I've been driving by there often to visit my mother. She's got a couple months to live. I stopped a couple times to check out the potential area. The excuse of it being too close to school property is ridiculous. It would be, it would worry me more that the apartment condos and the townhomes built above that property in question, as they are very, they're a barrier between the tiny home property and the school. You, you know, well, I don't know if you know or paid attention to the new apartments and condos or townhomes being built all over. The rent or the mortgages are expensive. So they're being pimped out to be subsidized, to subsidize the payments or rent. And I'm not talking about B and B, Airbnb, baby. I'm talking about by the hour. And you know what I mean. Twenty years ago, my apartment was used for that. City didn't do anything about it. Lady still owns those apartments. Lives in Oregon. Most recently, while house-sitting in a condo complex, strangers actually asked me what I was charging for a bedroom for a few hours. And does that include shower? So those people that are worried about the government-controlled tiny homes in a residential or school neighborhood, look around you and pay more attention to more than your own paranoia. People had a chance to get those D tests in the past and they did not listen. If you have that much time to complain about what you don't know about, then have time to go out to the other cities and see that it's working. First stop, Elka Home.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond, for your comments. Next, we have Ken King.
Here we are again. I see you've all received your replies that have been going around on the internet from the emails stating that we were going to have this meeting in the first week of February, last week of January. Can you actually say in the last city council meeting, on the twenty-first, that we are going to have the Home Project meeting, Troy Street, on the twenty-fifth, next Tuesday? Guess what? We're coming to that. You're not going to just obey. You're not going to tell us you're not having it. We are going to have that meeting, one way or another. Just because you decide that you don't want to have it, is it not a reason you're not going to have it? The media's going to be here, residents are going to be here, and we're going to talk about it. Do you better prepare the agenda and move your own tax program to the next week? Because you said at the last meeting that you were going to do that.
I, 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 I think that we need to put on, I don't need to name the house that is coming, but I want to see us setting a date that we were talking about.
Next, you say.
We didn't tell the public, like we, I don't think, tried to, or, or, we did, we didn't tell the public how that can be implemented and put in. And this February five would be late. But I, I feel that the city council, and, 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 and I would, 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 but, yes, I would, because I think there's a lot of this, uh, because county hasn't, and, 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 like, you're, or, or, but, um, I would like to see, I'll, I'll talk to the county supervisor. Oh, I'm talking to the.
Did you do that, Jennifer? Oh, yeah.
Next, we, next, we have Larry Bonnemo.
My name is Larry Bonnemo. I've lived in Lemon Grove since nineteen seventy, and I'm a property owner there. I've been in business since nineteen seventy, and I own the property across the street from Sleeping Cabs since nineteen seventy-five. A few months ago, we had an appointment with Supervisor Montgomery. She limited people to only four people because we were told that it was limited space and not enough seats. When we went to the meeting, the supervisor couldn't even show us the respect to show up. I believe she never intended to show up. There were plenty of seats there for other people to voice their concerns. So when you start off with a lie, most likely the rest of it's going to be a lie. They were just using us as propaganda so that they could say that they were addressing the concerns of the business in the area, and that was a lie. We found out that the people in the shelters went from needing a place to sleep while they worked in the daytime to a low-level person, drug addicts, mental condition, et cetera. Now we come to the Lemon Grove Council. Previous mayor wouldn't even listen to us or put it on the agenda for discussion. Now you see what happened to her. She was voted out. This can happen to you too. Now we come to the new mayor. We were told by you on February first, fourth, we were going to be given a date, February twenty-fifth, to have a public discussion on the sleeping cabins. And we still hope that we're going to have this. Some people serve on the city council to make their community a better place to live and work. Some do it for the power and the money so that they can do backroom deals. We, as business and homeowners in the area, have dealt with the homeless twenty-four hours a day. They're stopping asking our customers for money, cigarettes, sleeping in our parking lots, using our property as a toilet, pushing shopping carts down the center of Sweetwater Road, leaving them on our property, shooting off guns, breaking into homes and cars. We don't need another seventy to a hundred and forty people wandering the streets in the daytime. We have enough problems. If the Lemon Grove Council doesn't understand our problems, then maybe we should bring it to your neighborhood. Bring it to your attention to see how the people in your neighborhood would like us out there protesting. Maybe even take it to your work, see how your bosses like it. You are not here to serve the public.
Thank you. Your time is up. We really appreciate your comments. If you want to follow us, just reach out and let them, let them know, get in contact. Next, we have Mark, Mike Burnett.
Hello, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Mike Burnett. I'm a local architect and developer. Sorry. Hello, staff. Hello, everybody. Mike Burnett, a local architect and developer. Worked at the city fifteen years ago to help you guys with the freeway realignment off Lemon Grove Avenue and Decentronica One and Two Family and Senior Housing Projects. I own a little small piece of property left over and part of the redesign of the parcels for that project. And I'm here today to reintroduce myself. I've met most of you. I think Mendoza is the only one I've really met. We're on the planning commission for all that, so good to see you again. And Mr. Wood, good to see you again. Always here to be fun. But I've been bringing you a future housing project, so I wanted to come and say hi and reintroduce myself for that, and I'll be looking for your approval for that. I'd also like to submit to the record some information about it, and I'll continue working with staff on how to work to complete the vision of the downtown specific plan and the new, continue the vital pre-modelization of the later apartment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last speaker for that evening is Leona LaBaron.
I can wait a minute if you want to.
We don't have any other speakers, so she can listen to the recording. This is your time, so why don't put the clock on? You can spend it how you want.
Good evening, council. I want to know that every time that I seem to want to make a comment, actually, one of our city council members, council member Jennifer Mendoza, seems to take that opportunity to walk from her seat and do the restroom. That's a huge sign of disrespect for one, and it's conveniently done as to try to silence or to try to not have to hear the message that I'm going to present to you guys, knowing full and well that what I'm going to say is in large part what a lot of our community feels. Hence, I wanted her to be here so that she could listen. Because what I'm going to say, I'm just being the face behind it, but there's plenty of people from our community who feel according to what I'm going to say. Since summer of twenty twenty-four, while I was still in office, by the way, I'm a former city council member for anybody in the audience who are listening to this who doesn't know that. Since summer of twenty twenty-four, while I was still in office, the council majority has continually told the people to wait to be heard, wait to speak, wait to hear from them, pertaining to the project, the proposal to build sleeping cabins for the homeless near a preschool. During the regularly scheduled council meeting on January twenty-first of this year, both council member Mendoza and Mayor Snow spoke into the public record saying a February twenty-fifth meeting would be a good day to host a meeting to give the people their chance to discuss the sleeping cabins. However, since both council members, Mendoza and Snow, have made differing statements with one excuse after the other, further putting off the conversation about a project which will drastically impact our city, whether for bad or for good. We are told by two tenured council members and the city manager that the city does not have information about the project, and that in order for our city to move forward or to take a position on the cabins for the homeless, our city needs to have approval, opinion, and consent from the county. I am here to tell the three new council members and the public that that is a lie. We are an incorporated city with our own leadership and autonomy, and the fight of you absolutely can form an opinion, make an official statement, and take a position on behalf of the people and create a legal strategy in closed session, either for or against the project. I ask of you all to please do the right thing by this community. Our community wants to be heard. They want you guys all to take action on their behalf. By not putting this on the agenda and further postponing this conversation, all this council will be doing is upsetting the public and creating a huge wedge between them and you guys. And that's something that I know that you guys, at least, I know at least three of you folks, don't want that. In order for you guys to gain the trust and respect of the community, you have to live to your word and do the right thing.
Please turn this up and be respectful. Thank you. I'll take this time to allow the city manager to give us an update on the status of the agendized, the to-be-agendized discussion on the tiny home project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, City Council members, just to give you an update on that, I finally was able to get the commitment from county staff to come at our March fourth city council meeting to do a presentation. And it'll entail the folks that are designing the project, as well as the folks that are doing the operations of the project. To accommodate a large number of individuals, we're going to be over at the Alvarez Auditorium. So on March fourth at six o'clock. And then, Madam Mayor, if I could have Mr. Morgia talk a little bit about the pump station for the council's benefit?
Thank you, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Morgia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The project that Mr. Woods referenced earlier in his follow-up comments is related to the FY nineteen twenty zero redevelopment project, which includes the redevelopment of a pump station on Mr. Woods' property. That project is scheduled to go up to bid in March. We'll provide a more scheduled date, defined date, but within March, first two weeks, we'll have that project advertised.
And so, yeah, I thank you for making all the efforts to do the arrangements to agendize that meeting. We have been talking a lot with the county to try to coordinate this and get it all done. We've also had to find a space and venue big enough to accommodate everybody and to make it a really productive session. And so I appreciate, we wanted it done much sooner, and we've been working for that. But now, finally, on March fourth, we'll be able to have that meeting. So, and next, you'll go ahead and close about the panel.
As a part of the commentary, I just want to mention that written communication for the general public commentary has been received, and all members seated at the base have a copy of those letters, and those same letters can be downloaded publicly.
Most important, we want to know what our city's position is on that.
So you'll get a warning. This is your first opportunity to, to have a warning. After that, we'll ask you to leave.
No need. We want you guys to vote on what you guys feel on the project. We know what the county wants to do. We want to know.
Stop lying to us.
Mr. King, this is your first warning. No more offers.
And my second one is, stop lying to us. We're going to be in the tournament. Get the room over there, ready. We're going to be here for you.
Please leave the meeting.
You're a liar.
Please leave the meeting. Same thing, Ms. LaBaron. Please leave the meeting.
I'm not leaving the meeting, ma'am.
Please leave the meeting.
I'm not leaving.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a break for five minutes.
She likes being in, um, in handcuffs, kid.
Make sure it's on the record.
This council's not going to have me arrested. I listened. She told me to stop, and I did. So I'm pretty sure that the council, they're not going to have you escort me out in handcuffs. Go ahead, you can.
I'm tired of this BS from the liars that were sitting up there. You want trouble, you're going to get trouble.
Take your hands off me, sir. Sir, take your hands off.
No, take her. Get her out of here.
Brenda. Really? Excuse me. Wow. You've taken me.
All right, we'll go back on it right here. That is really unfortunate. We're just trying to conduct the meeting of the business, the business of the city. I don't want it to, like, require anybody to have to leave. I want to hear everybody's voices, and I want everybody to have the opportunity to be heard. So unfortunately, we can't conduct the meeting, and people are sitting there screaming and yelling during the meeting while we're trying to do the business of the city. while we're trying to do the business of the city.
You should be removed.
Yeah, you should.
I can also go.
Warning, warning in the back for Brenda.
I'm leaving.
Okay, thank you.
She fucked in my apartment, she fucked in my apartment.
And the general public comment portion of the agenda is now closed. Do I, and we'll now move to the consent calendar. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? There's no public comment on the calendar, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I've moved through with the consent.
Do you have a second?
I'm second. The motion was made by Mayor Lieutenant Mendoza with a second by Councilmember Byei to approve the consent calendar. Item one A, third one, what else? I have the roll call on the record, Councilmember Byei. Hi, Councilmember Haradia.
Aye.
Councilmember Aden Marano.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Mendoza.
Aye.
Mayor Snow.
Aye.
Motion carries, number five to zero.
Thank you, next, we have the reports to council. We'll move to item number two on the agenda. This is regarding the award of contract number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight for Edding Drive Storm Drain Improvement Project. Who would like to introduce Izzy Murgia, our Public Works Director, to present the staff report? All right, all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a recommendation to award a contract for the Edding Drive Storm Drain Improvement Projects, project. Before we delve into the depth of the PowerPoint, I will be providing some background as to how we got to where we are today, provide an overview of the project, and discuss the bid results. And proceed with staff's recommendation this evening, next slide, please. The fire chief alluded to last year's storm earlier in this evening's presentation, and I'm going to refer to them again, unfortunately. This project is a direct result of January twenty twenty-four storm, which bore two and three quarters inches in three hours in here in Lemon Grove, as well as the incorporated areas in San Diego County and the city of San Diego. According to FEMA, about almost forty-nine hundred structures across the county sustained damage from the storm. We saw that damage occur here in the city of Lemon Grove. In addition, the storm caused some public infrastructure damage, including some storm drains here in the city. One of those storm drains is the Edding Drive connection, next slide, please. The Edding Drive Storm Drain Connection conveys water from San Miguel down, down from San Miguel down to Leave Road, and then crosses Leave Road, across some drainage easements, out towards Edding Drive. The image here that you see on the left.
I can't concentrate on what's going on due to what just happened right now. I'm trying to pay attention to what he's saying, but I, can we take a quick break and just breathe?
I, yeah, but I don't want to give that undue attention, that's, that's a distraction. Unfortunately, the door, I, I just asked for that. So, I just asked for the door to be shut, and unfortunately, as soon as you shut the door, it locks. So, if somebody's willing to stand there by the door and open it for anybody who wants to enter, that would be a nice, a welcome relief, so.
I will stand near the door.
Oh, then it looks like Chief Code's going to head over there. Thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you pointing that out because it is distracting. And so, is it, is it okay if we're able to close that door a little less?
Yeah, I'm just kind of like.
You're right, it's right in your line of sight, I know.
Not just that, it's the sound from over there, and then just trying to process everything that happened and the way that it went down, I'm just, like, still kind of thrown back a little bit.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's go ahead and take a short break, finish for a few minutes, yeah. All right, we'll go, go ahead, and we're still on item number two, and Izzy, Izzy Murgia was giving us her presentation, and so I'll let you continue where we left off, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the item tonight is the, a recommendation to award a contract for the Edding Drive Storm Drain Improvement Project. The images that you're seeing here is the aftermath of the January twenty twenty-four storms. The image on the right-hand side is a sinkhole that resulted from the storms. This is the alignment of the storm drain between the properties on Edding Drive. The picture here on your left, you can see a wooden fence that divides the properties of twenty-four sixty and twenty-four eighty-four Edding Drive. That sinkhole is located in this vicinity here, where the gap later appears. This just gives you an indication of the effects of the storm and the condition of our storm drain, both. The total amount of rain that we got that day, in addition to the aging infrastructure, resulted in this equal compromise storm drain, next slide, please. This slide here provides an overview of the project. In essence, the project will begin downstream on Edding Drive. We will be replacing approximately a hundred and sixty feet of corrugated metal pipe with a twenty-four inch high-density polyvinyl storm drain from the end of the cul-de-sac on Edding Drive, heading north. We'll be installing a new storm inlet right at this juncture. The second segment of this project includes replacing a hundred and forty-six feet of corrugated metal pipe with a twenty-four inch HPPE pipe. And this segment here runs along or between properties twenty-five nineteen and twenty-five twenty-five Leave Road. Lastly, we'll be replacing thirty-three feet of corrugated metal pipe under Leave Road and installing two storm drain inlets on the north, on the east and west side of Leave Road. The photos in the previous slide occurred here along this alignment between the properties of Edding Drive. The alignment here, staff's recommendation is recommending this project for two reasons, one, the storm drain alignment along Leave Road and between the properties on Leave is within a public, an accepted storm drain drainage easement. The storm drain alignment between the properties on Edding Drive was on a private storm drain easement as part of an item earlier today. Staff recommended the acceptance, accepting the dedication of the drainage easement between these two properties, which would allow us to move forward with this project. The storm drain alignment then continues down Edding Drive, which is within the public right-of-way. In an effort for staff to maintain the storm drain alignment, we are recommending, or we recommended that the city council accept a dedication to move forward with the project. As you can imagine, when maintaining this storm drain juncture and alignment, it's difficult to stop, stop and go, stop and go when you have a private storm drain or an accepted drainage easement right in the middle. So, in an effort to continue and close any gaps within the storm drain structure or storm drain system, we recommended the acceptance of the easement and to move forward and allow the rehabilitation of this entire segment. Next slide, please. Staff, staff advertised a request for bid on January tenth and seventeenth, and bids were received on February sixth. Staff received five bids for this project, with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder being Montano Pipeline Incorporated in an amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. As part of this, as part of tonight's recommendations, we are requesting an appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars from the Transnet Local Street Improvement, also known as LSI carryover balance, to the Transnet Fiscal Year twenty-four twenty-five budget line item, CIP LG sixteen storm drain, which is a mouthful, but in essence, this is our budget where we, that we utilize for storm drain replacement projects. The LSI carryover, or the Transnet LSI carryover, in essence, is the overage of the half-set sales tax that the, that Sandag, or I should say, County Rep, yeah, County residents approved back in nineteen eighty-seven and was reauthorized in two thousand and four. This half-set sales tax goes and pays for transportation projects. It provides money for a lot of our street projects, including our storm drain projects. The LSI carryover was a, an overage, for lack of better words, that we had from prior years that we were able to reallocate towards current projects. And this request would have gone before you as part of the mid-year process, but since this project came beforehand, we're requesting those funds now. Next slide. So, this slide here is a little different from the table in your agenda reports, specifically the contingency, the contingency amount in the staff reports we had as ten percent, so the overall total project budget was a little higher. We reduced that amount to five percent contingency, so the overall total cost of the project, we're estimating to be three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. In addition to the bid cost of three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, we're including a line item for construction management to have a construction manager out there on a day-to-day basis to manage the contract. We currently don't have the staff to do that, to manage the project every day. Additionally, a line item for materials testing, so essentially, when the contractor is fat-filling, the excavation of the storm drain pipe and putting back the road base and the asphalt, the material is done so in a correct manner and in accordance to specifications, we have to pay a testing soils engineer to do that work. So, that's what that line item is there, for a subtotal amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, plus the contingency, we're recommending a total project budget of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. I mentioned the appropriation request, the remainder of the funds for the project will come out of SB, or SB one gas tax money. We have a budget line item specifically for storm drains, and that's where the additional funds would, would come from. And in total, I think we have a hundred and eighty-four thousand remaining in that budget, last I checked. Next slide, please. With that, staff's recommendation that the city council authorize an appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars from Transnet LSI carryover balance to the Transnet Fiscal Year twenty-four twenty-five budget line item, CIP LG sixteen storm drain, and that the council award a contract number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight to Montano Pipeline Incorporated for three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars for storm drain improvements between Leave Road and Edding Drive, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents. This concludes staff's presentation, I'll have to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation. And now, we'll go to our council members for any questions. I'm sorry, but before we do that, we have public comment. So, not so fast. All right, we do have one person speaking on public comment, we have Craig Morris.
Mr. Kessy. Craig Morris, resident, Edding Drive. It's one of my properties that was involved in the failure of the storm drain, and I'm just, I'm excited for the project, hope this gets moved forward, or we move this forward, and we can all return back to what we used to do, and get my property back to its condition before the storm drain failed. I want to firstly thank the city staff, especially Izzy, this hard work that he's put forward. You can call me when you hear a big storm is coming in, say, hey, Craig, let me know if you need anything. You know, if something happens, the staff will come out, so we'll put a shout out to Izzy, he's a great guy, so. Thank you, and let's move this forward.
Madam Mayor, I also mentioned, which wasn't in the formal presentation, Mr. Murgia and I last May applied to Congressman Sarah Jacobs for a direct congressional allocation to help take care of some of these issues related. for a direct congressional allocation to help take care of some of these issues related to the storms. We were one of the projects she did choose to move forward with the process. Unfortunately, it has been tied up in the federal budgetary process with the continuing resolutions, and I fear now with the new administration, members' requests will not be fulfilled, so we haven't received any word on whether they're moving forward or the administration is moving forward. The March budget discussions that the federal government will do is related to this year's current budget, and we should know by then whether it's going to be a go for members' request or a no-go for members' request. So I will give council an update after I know sometime after the CR, or the budget is adopted by Congress and signed by President Trump.
All right, so that concludes public comment on this item, and now we will ask council member for any questions, concerns, or deliberations. Councilmember Alde Marano?
Thank you. You might have covered this, Mr. Miguel, but how long do we expect the project to take to complete?
He plans to require sixty working days.
Any other questions? All right, Councilmember Byye?
No questions, but I do have a comment. I did visit Mr. Morris's property, and I did see for myself firsthand, just, I mean, I think, I think it was a snippet of just the, it was a snippet of just the infrastructure that is kind of failing throughout our city, but I would also like to see this be pushed through, because I think Mr. Morris has been here a couple of times, and he's, I think he himself speaks on behalf of many other of our residents who are kind of going, who live around that Edding and part of the neighborhood, that's why he affects a lot of people, but he's been here to represent them, so. I also, myself, would like to see this pushed through, seeing firsthand what he and his neighbors have to go through, so.
Councilmember Haridya?
Okay, yes, I agree, I remember you coming here during council meetings before I was elected, and I'm excited to see this move forward as well. I know that that area was particularly hard, and we, it's slow-moving, but here we are today, we're getting there, and I love that you put the urgency on it. Thank you, appreciate that. I noticed you said you think you, that we have a hundred and eighty-four thousand remaining in the Transnet carryover, but we're doing an authorization of two hundred thousand, what's the extra sixteen thousand? Where is that coming from, I should say, that extra sixteen thousand?
Yes, that's one too. So the hundred and eighty-four thousand that was referenced is in our gas tax, gas tax budget for storm drains, which is separate from this budget. There were some expenses for some other storm drain replacements for that fund, but in total, we have a hundred and eighty-four thousand in the gas tax budget. We also, so, and then in addition to that, we're requesting two hundred thousand for Transnet, which, again, is a separate budget for storm drains. We have essentially two pots of money for storm drain replacement projects, gas tax, and then Transnet. And so the appropriation request is coming from the Transnet side of the house to cover the overall cost of the project. As the city manager alluded, we were expecting, we were expecting an appropriation from the federal government to cover this project. In the absence of that, this is where, this is why the appropriation request is being created.
Thank you for moving forward regardless of federal funds.
Mayor President Mendoza?
Yeah, I want to thank Izzy for all your hard work on this project and all the other projects that we've been dealing with since the storms last year. And I want to thank Mr. Morris for your patience, and I'm glad we're finally in this day and for you. So I have a question. We, you know, we've all seen the corrugated metal pipes, storm drain pipes, that were put in before we ever became a city, or some of us were even alive, maybe. And I, who is the youngest person here? I know it's not, I know it's not me, I know it's not me. But, you know, none of us are experts on this, but the.
Hi, again, Cindy Holly Ethelene. I'm assuming this is, can be much better than the corrugated metal pipes. Can you just talk for a second about how long, is this going to extend the life of these storm drain projects?
Certainly, enough, I wasn't clear in the presentation, I apologize, but the HDPE pipe will replace the corrugated metal pipe. So it'll be an all-new, you can think of it as a plastic pipe, high-dense plastic pipe, that has a useful lifespan of hundred, hundred to hundred and fifty years plus, and so it's not going anywhere anytime soon.
That's, that's what we want to hear.
And if I can, just to piggyback off of those comments, the Alde Marano's, Councilmember Alde Marano's question, those sixty working days, if there's a rain event or a delay or anything like that, the contractor can ask for those extensions for any delays that they may experience due to unforeseen conditions.
So I'm glad that we have a construction management person on staff and on the case. I think that will be a critical factor in making sure that this does happen within that sixty-day timeframe. And I also hope that their presence there will help avoid additional contingency costs that might come through. So I think that is a wise investment to be able to have somebody there on-site for all the days that we're working on it. I also had the opportunity to go to Mr. Morris's house, and also another family that was directly impacted by this. And this, this was a really difficult challenge.